You go then.
I'm beat. Are we ready? Okay, yeah, I figured it. Laurie, you ready?
Depressed.
No? Okay. Yeah. Good afternoon colleagues and audience members. My name is Ed Reichsinger. I am the chairman of the Land Use and Transportation Committee for the City Council. Welcome to the City Council chambers. We are here this afternoon to conduct our 21st work session on City Council Bill 12-0152, Transform Baltimore Zoning. During our 20th work session held on Tuesday, January 27th, we worked on Title 14, which was U standards on page 227 to page 244. Today, we will continue our work sessions of Title 15, Site Development Standards, starting on line one of page 245, and work on as much as we can during today's session in two hours. The Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the bill by reviewing it page by page, starting with Title One and continuing through the bill in the order it is written. City agencies and the public will be asked to participate by raising their questions or comments and amendments as the committee is discussing the page they have a comment, question, or amendment regarding that title. I encourage everyone to visit the City Council website, which is www.baltimorecitycouncil.com to stay updated with the sections of the bill. The Land Use and Transportation Committee is working on it at each work session. In addition to the currently scheduled series of work sessions, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will likely hold additional, an additional hearing and work sessions. Information about those will be distributed to the public as soon as dates, times, and topics are selected. Again, please check the Baltimore City Council's website for the most up-to-date information. If you are unable to attend the scheduled work session and you wish to provide written comments or amendments, please mail to the Office of Council Services. Attention to Jennifer Coats at 100 North Holiday Street, Baltimore, mail in 21202, or you can email Jennifer at jennifer.coats@baltimorecity.gov. The one and only grammar I have is please turn off your cell phones, smartphones, Androids to give respect and courtesy to those who are going to testify. We are, we are joined by my colleague to the far left, Councilwoman Ricky Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To her immediate right is Councilman Bill Henry. Talking to his right, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. To my immediate left is Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Sharon Green.
We're also joined by Angela Gibson from the mayor's office. Also, we are joined by Kara Kerst from President Jack Young's office. To her left is Paul Plymouth, who also is here representing President Jack Young. To my immediate right is the staff person, Jennifer Coats. To my right, we will now start on page 245, Title 15, Site Development Standards, subtitle one, Purpose of Title, and it's line 315-101, Purpose. If anybody, I'll just read the purpose clause for everyone. The purpose of this title is to address the regulation of site improvements on a lot other than the regulations applicable to the principal building. This includes measurement, methodologies, site design standards, accessory structures and uses, temporary uses, permitted encroachments, and performance standards. So, does anyone, does any of my colleagues have any amendments on page 245?
Yeah.
No? Anyone from the audience? Ms. Floyd, you have amendment on page 245?
I have a, I guess you could call it a comment for today.
So it's not amendment, it's comment?
Observation.
Observation.
The purpose clause makes it seem as if this is, this section is not going to apply to the principal building, but it appears that several immediate, sections that immediately follow it do in fact apply to the principal building. The, the stuff you're about to get into. So I just think that it's ambiguous. I don't quite understand what they're...
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Wait, hold on, wait. It's still reading over there. You done? Are you finished?
Well, I, I'm hoping Councilman Henry will help me here.
Well, okay, well, okay. Councilman Henry?
I'm just going to ask over to lawn planning if there is an objection to changing...
Oh, I could, I could have did that.
Changing other, changing other than to including.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any?
I have a question about that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm presuming all the time that, I, I agree with what you're doing, but, and Ms. Floyd's suggesting, but all the time I'm looking at this chapter, I'm thinking of site plan development at planning. Is this, is there a connection, or is this just happened to be called Site Development Standards, and it's not about that process?
It's not Design Standards, everything's the same.
Yeah.
There's two differences between, yeah.
I think the councilwoman might...
Plan Review.
Might be referring to the Site Plan Review Committee, which is outlined in earlier section. Title 15 are the rules.
That they are following?
That everyone is following. It's the, it would be the law.
I, I under, I understand that. Okay, that's, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. No one has any amendments or further discussion on page 245? Then we shall go to page 246, which I know that when it comes to amendments, we're going to go with the council first. I know Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark has a, has amendments on page 246, six through eight, just to help you out with that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, the purpose of my amendment is to keep the height measurement of a building with the baseline of the curb instead of with rising grades on that, a given site, even if there is a, a big setback. So, I, I'm, so, I just went, I've just been through a development plan on Crittendon in Hampden, and height was an issue, but it's not an issue in the current code that is, is regulated, except you can't go higher than 35 feet. But then the question is, measured from where? And I don't, I'm not sure we ever resolved it, but we wanted it to be measured from the curb. Now, across the street from this development are two-story brick row houses, fairly small. And since we already have at the Rotunda, great big buildings out to the curb across from two-story row houses. This is the second go-round of the implications. In the Rotunda case, they did measure from the curb. It was the setbacks that were the problem. But summing it all up, I'm asking for a deletion of this exemption. It says if the, if the building's set back 30 feet from the curb, then you don't, you, you take a mean, and mean, like middle, of the average elevation of the ground between the wall and the curb. That's always going to be higher in my experience, and I'd just like them to measure from the curb wherever the building is.
Yes, go ahead.
Just to comment on the reason that is there, if you can picture a large lot with a single detached house on it, say, for example, that may be as much as 30 feet or greater set back from the curb. In Baltimore, our sites aren't flat, so it is, if you measure everything from the curb, if the land slopes up dramatically from the curb, let's say 30 feet up, because it's a very steep slope 30 feet back, then if you start to put the building on that hill and you were measuring height from the curb, you could probably put a five-foot-high building because you were measuring it from the curb. So it's really important to have this option for the types of areas of the city. It's, it's not so important in the dense inner-city areas. It is very important in the areas of the city that have large front yards, especially if it's not flat land, because you could make them unbuildable.
What about, okay, so, I understand what you're saying. It could be a, it could be a situation like that, but it also could be a situation where it is a problem. And so I'd like a little, I'd like a little wiggle room in there. Maybe you have to go to the zoning board if you want to, if you want to exceed the cur, this, the height limitation as measured from the curb. But if it were 30 feet or more, you could get a conditional approval to do it, or something like that.
Do you, do you see any wiggle room?
I, I don't. I would be very afraid that in some of our single-family detached-house neighborhoods, you could make it very, very difficult to build a simple two-story house.
That's why I would...
I mean, if you happen to have a hill site, you'd be going to the zoning board just to build a regular old two-story house.
Well, a regular old two-story house in Crittendon towers over the regular two-story houses immediately across a narrow street. So, one of the reasons...
Well, those wouldn't qualify, I mean, those wouldn't qualify for this because they're not more than 30 feet back.
That's right, but they are up a hill. They're up a rise, and that was the point.
Well, they would still be measured from the curb. This only, point B, the front wall of the building is not within 30 feet of the curb. If it's within 30 feet, you measure from the curb. This only kicks in if it's, the building is further than 30 feet back, which is your required front yard in, say, an R1 district.
Okay, I, I hear what my colleague from planning is saying. And I, I don't want to withdraw it, but I'd like a way to think about it.
Councilwoman, it's an amendment you want to...
Right, it's in there, but I, but I'm not, it's not like, I'm not adamant crazy.
Yeah, okay, well, when the time comes, we'll...
I'm, I'm just interested. And I, you understand my issue, and there's got to be a way for, maybe it's in another place, but I wanted to say someplace then.
Yeah, well...
How about this, someplace that it's only, that otherwise it's measured from the curb. If it's closer, it's measured from the curb, because that wasn't what happened.
I think that's what this says. A, it says it's measured from the curb, or if it's more than 30 feet back, you can do this average elevation. I think that's what that says.
It doesn't say it clearly.
Councilwoman Clark, you're placing your amendment into the...
I'm putting it in, and I'll go back and reread and see what I, I see what you mean. The mean curb level. Let me just read that, I'm sorry. The height of a building is generally measured vertically. From mean curb, what is the mean curb level of the right-of-way? It's, what is the mean curb level?
So if the street is sloping?
Uh-huh.
The, and the property is, let's say, 20 feet wide, and it slopes from zero and it goes up 10 feet, the mean would be five feet. From that middle measurement of the property, that average. So in other words, you wouldn't measure it from the property line necessarily, and the reason it uses the mean is theoretically it could curve, it could go up and back down. So it's not saying the high point or the low point, it's saying the mean of the front of the property.
If you're on the low end of the mean, do you get, so you're going to get a little higher, and if you're on the high, you're going to get a little lower.
The mean is the mean. The mean is by definition that midpoint.
All right.
On each individual property.
We can, we have, we have time, you two can, I mean, she wants to delete B, so between now and we do the amendments.
I just want to make sure somewhere in this place, it says clearly in language that people can understand, and mathematically, that...
Mr., John Willis?
Mr. Chair, maybe...
I want to apologize. We also have with us John Willis, he's the attorney for the, for the committee.
If, if I'm following the council, Councilwoman Clark's concern, you could perhaps add clarity in A by adding if the building is within 30 feet of the curb. I mean, that...
That would help.
If that, that might help, you know, just create a parallel structure. So if it's within 30 feet, it's the curb, if it's...
The front wall of the building.
Correct.
That's a good idea. I'll, I'll accept that.
Okay.
Instead of my amendment. Okay? Building is within, is, if the, if the front wall of the building is within 30 feet of the curb, okay.
Delete nine. Planning, we, you're scratching your head, Laurie, is everything...
Well, the B still would stay. It would be changing A.
That's right.
To create that distinction of the 30 feet. You're either inside it or you're outside 30 feet.
All right, so we just...
I'm, I'm good for accepting that and rejecting myself on B.
Okay, we got it.
Thank you.
You're not rejecting yourself, you're rejecting it.
I'm rejecting amendment one.
Okay.
And substituting.
All right, we are still on page 246. Anyone, any of my colleagues have anything on 246? Councilman Henry? Anyone from the audience have anything on page 246? Okay, so now we shall go on to page 247, and I see Councilwoman...
Yeah.
Before we go to the amendment, we are also joined by Councilman Eric Costello, who's in the rear. We are now on, thank you, we are now on amendment two, on page 247, which is line six through eight, right, Councilwoman?
Thank you. This is amendment two, and I would delete lines six through eight that say, a lot with three or more dwelling units, a fraction of the total area that is 50% or more of the required lot area factor counts as an additional permitted dwelling unit. I would take that out, and I, because I would like to retain the 25% variance requirement at the zoning board.
Planning?
Those two things are somewhat apples and oranges. I don't really have objection to deleting the rounding. The last sentence on the lot with three or more dwelling units essentially allows you to do rounding only in the larger developments. And, you know, if the council sees, you got to round up or down, I mean, that's just math. So if the council prefers rounding down as opposed to rounding up, we are not going to strongly object to that, though I don't know if housing would. But the issue about the authority for a variance is really a completely different item.
I know.
And I don't think it belongs here, and I'd like to take the opportunity to mention why we left it out. In working with the current code for many years, it has been our experience that the, the current code gives the boards very clear variance room. We discussed that, which is for dwelling unit density, it happens to be 25%. We discussed that with our consultants and other planners around the country, and they concurred that it is not good form to do that, because essentially you're creating a situation, and it has been true over the last 40 years, that that 25% is assumed. And they said it's much better to put your density where you want it to be and keep your standards for variances there, and then it's incumbent upon the board to much more clearly review the variance standards, that is, the requirement for uniqueness before varying it, that by putting in the 25%, and this has proven to be true over the last 40 years, the board does not really look at those for variances. They are not very careful because they just treat that as wiggle room on the 25%, and they almost never apply the variance standards as are required, that there is something unique about the site or the condition to issue a variance. And that is why we eliminated those numbers, because they have proved to be, to a certain extent, sort of a, an automatic given, and have not served the city well. If the council disagrees with that and chooses to put those numbers back in, I think we'd have to figure out the best place for them. I suspect it would be in Title Four where we have variance standards, not buried in this section. But I think the committee should discuss the, the broader concept, and then we would figure out where that would be. But I would think, and I don't know if the lawyers have another view, but that this would more logically fit with variance standards.
Yes, I wasn't trying to amend a variance of 25% or any specific like that into this section, and, but, but I have been confused about variances in, in going through this code, because I don't understand what this, and I know I've been through that chapter and everything, but I don't understand what the standards are. Now, variances are harder to get approved at the zoning board than conditional uses, which are, I totally agree, the board seems to take as a given, like you want it, you, you're entitled to it. But variances, if you're, if you're getting there on the right day, you know, there are standards that will be paid attention to, and you can have a, like a conversation before it's approved. But, and, and I just don't know where the give and take at all is actually, that is not subjective, like, I don't want somebody's opinion to be what it is in the code for change, putting more units someplace, and I know it's not.
We actually, we actually did not change the variance standards from the current code. They are in Title Four, and they, my understanding is they are really based on enabling legislation from the state, you know, that there really isn't a whole lot of wiggle room. The issue of the, I mean, I guess I would ask that the council talk about the two pieces in this amendment two separately. Title 15 really is about measurement, so the notion of how you round numbers is what Title 15 is about. So your proposal to delete that last sentence, you know, that really should be talked about separately from variance standards and adding dwelling units.
Amendment two, you mean?
Yes, I think it should be broken into two parts for the sake of discussion, in whether you want the rounding to be different, because that's what your deletion refers to.
Yeah.
And then talk about variances, because I think it needs to be in two different places. So this says that you can round up.
50% versus 25% now?
No, 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 no. No, this is not about variances. There is no 25% in the rounding in the code now.
There's 50, if you've got something that's 50% of the right size.
Right.
50%, you can round up and put a unit there.
What this is saying is only where there's three or more dwelling units.
I understand, that's what it always usually is.
So I guess, you know, people should discuss whether that should be 50 or 75, you know, I'm not, that we're proposing 50 allows you to round up.
I think it should be 100%, but I'm trying to be conservative and say 25, but...
Had you come up with 50%?
I don't want a dwelling unit because there's a pile of dwelling units going up, and there's a leftover half lot, and then they get to put a dwelling on it. That's what I don't want.
Then, I, I, based on what you're saying, I would suggest that you delete that last sentence, and I don't even think you need to replace it with anything. Hillary, am I wrong? The assumption would be you don't get any rounding up if you don't state it otherwise, right?
That's why I did it.
Just delete that last sentence and call it a day.
That's what my amendment is.
Right?
Consensus. Write that down. Thank you, thank you.
I mean, I would defer to the lawyers, but I think you just delete that last sentence.
Joan, she's, yeah, Ms. Floyd, she has two more amendments on page 47.
On this section, minus on this section, my comment.
No, on 247. She has two more amendments, right?
Well, I mean, I'd be happy to, but it's up to you.
Well, do you have an amendment, or are you, are you responding to her?
This is about, the conversation she was just telling.
Okay, if it's, if it's related to that, yeah.
Is it related, exactly? What I wanted to add was a comment about the, the wording of the second sentence there that we've just been talking about. I think that if, if the council wanted to go ahead and have the rounding, I think the wording needs to be better on this, because I don't think it's clear that what you're talking about is, is you're looking at a remainder from the, you did the mathematical process in the first sentence, and you have a remainder, and you're only talking about the remainder, and how to treat that remainder. I think the problem, the wording that I'm seeing here is unclear enough that I can very well see how it could be abused on down the line to, to make it seem like 50% gives you the unit. So you have to be clear, if you're going to do this rounding thing, and maybe you're going to drop it altogether, but if you're going to do it, it needs to be better expressed so that everybody knows you're talking about the remainder of the mathematical operation.
I think we do.
Okay.
You, you, you measure out your lots, you got half a lot left. You measure out your lots, you've got half a lot left over, and half a lot rounds up to one. I don't want that.
They adjusted to take it out, so.
Yeah, well, good.
So, Councilwoman, you have two more amendments.
Yeah, I do.
I said it earlier that you, you know, that the council do the amendments, and then we'll go to the audience.
Okay, I've got density, a density amendment on page 247, lines 33, 30, and 34. The permitted density of the lot, it goes all the way back up, which to dedicated land that's given to the city. The permitted density of the lot, as computed under this section, may not exceed 120 percent of the density that otherwise would be allowed for that lot.
You want to delete that?
I want to delete it and make it 100 percent.
Planning?
Is that a bonus because you gave it to the city, which has 10 million vacant lots already?
Well, this is only under a section for highway and open space dedication where this would kick in. It is a provision that's rarely used, but, and I think if you reduce it to 100 percent, it would never get used, but we don't feel strongly because it's rarely used.
I think you're right, and that's why I want to do it because we're talking about properties that are, by definition, not developable, I would presume.
Not always. I mean.
I don't want them in my district. I really don't. I mean, I can just see it now. Somebody gives some land, and the next thing you know, you've got, it's got a zoning designation. The next thing you know, somebody's buying it and building something on it. It's a little lot. We are jammed already.
So this is major highway and open space dedication?
Yeah, I mean, so what are we developing? You know, I mean, it doesn't even make sense that we even have this provision, but if we do, just as, you know, it's not going to really, it's really moot almost.
Well.
There's, there are situations, and I think there were some down in Farring Baybrook, I guess, in Councilman Reisinger's district, where you may have a property abutting a park or for a highway that there's a logical ownership split, and it could benefit both the owner as well as the city. But if, if the council wants to reduce that, that's their prerogative.
Is it worth the squeeze?
Pardon me?
Is it worth the squeeze from 120 to 100 percent?
Our recommendation is you would give some sort of bonus for that land dedication. It's a pretty onerous process. As you can see, they have to, you know, do the subdivision and dedicate it. It has to be approved by the planning commission, you know, and given to the city at the request of the planning commission. This isn't like dumping your vacant lot on the city. This is as part of an approved, you know, highway or park improvement. This isn't dumping vacant lots.
Yeah, so Councilwoman Clark, I mean, you want it to be 100 percent instead of 120?
100 percent's a lot.
Okay, well.
100, it's 100 percent of what you would have under current zoning. So everybody knows going in, donating, accepting, planning commission. They all know it's zone this, it's that dimension, this is what you can do on it. But so if you bonus it, then some neighbor's going to turn around and call somebody on the phone and say, they're saying that they're going to build yadda yadda, but it's zone this. How can they do that?
Yeah, Councilwoman Clark, I mean, okay, this is your amendment. You stated earlier that you don't want it in your district, so when we get to, when we get to the amendments, it's your amendment to the bill.
I'll talk to, I'll speak.
Okay, all right. Anyone else?
That's all I have on this page.
Okay, on page 247. Anyone in the audience have anything on page 247? No? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, but I don't understand what the final paragraph on this page, how it works.
Where are you at?
I'm on page 247, lines 36 to 40. I don't have an amendment, I just don't understand it.
Inclusionary housing adjustment. Housing, I mean, Laura, you want to give her that?
This is, again, identical to the existing code. We did not make any changes to the inclusionary housing law. We just copied it in, so.
And it's just that.
Yeah, and that's all it is. You know, it got broken down into different places because of the organization of chapters, but.
Yeah, I got what you're saying.
Okay.
Thanks.
At page 247, we were now, we are now on page 248, and Councilwoman Clark, you have page 248, you have amendments from page 1 through 10, is that correct?
Can't stand myself, I never could. Is there an urban renewal area? I have one.
Yeah, we're waiting for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment for on page 248, lines 1 through 10, very simple. I would like to delete the whole thing.
Okay, you want to delete 15 dash 403 rear yard reduction?
In its entirety.
The whole thing?
Yes, I do. Rear yards are important. This messes with them in ways that are confusing to me, but clear enough that it's a way around, for smaller lots, it's a way around the setback, the rear setbacks that are in the proposed table of regulations.
Okay.
I just, I don't want it. I've got a lot of properties that are less than 100 feet long, deep.
Law department?
I just had a question. Are you replacing it with a variance needed, or are you just saying no rear yard reduction?
I think that's a good question, and I think it goes to the former conversation that I would always leave room for some kind of variance, but it's not appropriate in this section.
Okay, so you'd put like whatever your variance standards are in the variance area? Got it.
I think the law department brings up a good point. Again, it's up to the council, but one of the reasons that the rear lot reduction rule is in our code is we have lots of row houses around the city, right? So, and there's chunks of them that are deep, but a lot that are very narrow lots. So what this does is essentially provide for a reduction formula, short of going to the board, because it is very difficult legally to meet standards for a variance when you're not unique. You have the same lot as many other people. Maybe it's a vacant lot, and the existing block is, you know, built out that way. You still can't create, you know, a situation of uniqueness. And again, this is standard language similar to the current code. I would defer to the committee on this, but that is the reason, and if you delete it, it would automatically require a variance. I don't think you need to state that, though I defer to law. But it will make it harder for the homeowner to get a variance.
Well, I think what you need to realize is if you have no rear yard reduction either here or in a variance area, then one would not be allowed. So you'd need, if you don't put it here, and there's lots of reasons to put it in variance land, just make sure you have standards in that area so that it's not passed, and then we would basically say later, if it's silent on that, especially because it was in this draft and then taken out, it would be seen as you never get one. So you just want to put it somewhere.
I totally agree and appreciate what you're saying, and that's where it belongs, is where variances are. This is, that gives people a chance in a neighborhood to be, to know what's happening and to have something to say about it, instead of 10 lines in the middle of a non-entity title that all of a sudden become important to your life. And I'd rather have it in the variance section and let people go seek that. We're not talking about a homeowner that's there now, we're talking about new construction.
We, it's in our court, it's going to come into our committee. Councilman, you done?
I'm sorry, I'm done.
Councilwoman, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Henry?
I was just going to ask, planning, for maybe a more specific illustration of an example of using this because I'm trying to visualize what it would look like, and I'm having trouble picturing the situation because the closest I can come up with is if there is a block of row houses where most of them have, you know, relatively small backyards, and then the end of group was knocked down and somebody's rebuilding it, this would provide a table, I mean, this would provide a calculation for why they could maybe build further back than their neighbors' houses already go. Is that?
It possibly, but again, this only kicks in on the shorter lots, less than 100 feet, and maybe the council, if you're concerned about this, would just want to reduce that 100 feet. Maybe it only applies to 80-foot-deep lots if you're concerned about abuse. But essentially what this says, in my 90-foot lot, if, you know, there's a vacancy, that if I, I could reduce it by 10 percent, the amount of yard required. So if my required yard is 20 feet, my lot's only 90, I could reduce it by the 2 feet, the 10 percent. It's taking into account that if you have a shorter lot, you have less to work with and you need a little more wiggle room.
We've got that in Locust Point.
Okay, all right, okay.
You know, a compromise may be to lower the 100 feet as, when this kicks in. I think what you find is in the really older parts of the city, like Locust Point, you know, where you really have like 60-foot-length lots. I mean, it's pretty hard to even fit a basic house.
I, I.
And the problem with the variance is if all of Locust Point has 60-foot yard or 60-foot properties, they go to the board, the board says, what's unique about your property? Well, nothing's unique about it. So it makes it very difficult to build, even to rebuild what was there, and that is the reason for this language.
And I guess then, this is one of those ones that might come down to a sort of a philosophical question of whether or not it should be, whether, I mean, a compromise might be difficult in that I think the, the point that this turns on is, should there be the option, or should there be the ability to have a different backyard than your neighbors' by right? As opposed to, I mean, you're, I'm not, I'm not arguing with any of the situations you're describing in terms of why you might want to do what this provides, but I'm just saying that there, what it's going to turn on is, why should, why should the property owner who wants to take advantage of this get to just automatically do it without their, you know, their neighbors having an opportunity to complain to somebody about it?
The other suggestion may be to reword this and not necessarily speak to the depth of the property, but to speak to the sort of averaging of the yards. And I think we changed some of that, but there are provisions under the current code, and you could reword it to say, if the, you know, average of the rear yards on a given block is 30 feet, you know, in other words, to tie it to what the block is. It's not really intended to make it different than the neighbors. It's intended to reflect the challenges of building on shorter lots.
Yeah, is there, is there still, I feel like there used to be some process, and I'm, I'm sorry, I can't remember what the, what it was that you were getting approval for, but where in order to even apply for it, you had to have the signatures of both adjacent property owners if you're in the middle of a block. It's some, it's something that happens in construction because I remember we, it's, but anyway, my point is, would it be possible to have a two-level process where if you have, you know, your adjacent neighbors signing off on this, you could do a by-right kind of thing, but if you don't have the agreement of your neighbors, then you have to go to the zoning board and get a variance?
I think that's contract zoning, but I'll leave that to the lawyers.
Yeah, I mean, we would have to look into it. The problem with the variance is, like Laurie said, you've got to show you're unique in a way that no one else in your area is. So the comprehensive is supposed to be the rules sort of for everyone, and then if you need a variance, the courts require showing some sort of specialness. So, I mean, that's what you'd run up against there.
And once again, I'm reminded of Mr. Radkowski's concerns about zoning as a concept, which is, why is this a straitjacket? You know, is there some level, is there some, is there some level that we can create where literally the question before whatever decision-making body, be it the zoning board or the council or the zoning administrator, the decision, the question before them is, does anybody care about this? Like, is this bothering anybody?
Somebody does because we've been talking about it for 15 years.
Yeah, I mean, from a legal standpoint, that would be a problem if that's your only criteria because, you know, they usually have, the courts require some sort of criteria, and for variances, it's usually some showing that unlike all my neighbors, I'm really sort of extra hardship, not a word, there in that property, unlike everybody else. So, I mean, I think something like this where you sort of put in a mechanism for super-small properties, which we seem to have a lot of, would be one way to go.
The other thing you may want to look at, the council may want to refresh their memory on page 89, the major and minor variances.
You gotta be kidding me.
And what is suggested there, the.
What line are you at?
Page 89, starting at line 17, and going down, and it sets the standards there for minor variances based on the context. This is consistent with what the zoning board has done now through, and it's another name. Councilman Henry, you'll, you might remember it as the Claire Corcoran Rule from your Patterson Park days, but it was, it was because a variance was turned down at the zoning board because it did not meet uniqueness. Essentially, someone was trying to modernize their house and put in an adequate stair width that required a 2-foot addition, and she had an issue with her neighbor, and so the battle of the lawyers at the zoning board ended up denying the variance because they said, there's nothing unique about your row house. Your row house is the same as everybody else's. The problem with that in Baltimore is. The problem with that in Baltimore is, and I'm glad our council people from the 13th and the 9th have joined us, because you have a lot of row houses, is it makes it very difficult to modernize our older houses. Because, yeah, they're not unique, but when you bring them up to code, they often need an addition. You know, or you try to put in an adequate kitchen that's not, you know, a 1919 kitchen. You know, they need an addition. So that was the sort of where all this came from. We do have a challenge in our older housing stock. And we're trying to find the sweet spot.
I, I think that it's in our court regardless of the variances, and we'll, we'll deal with that.
But do look at the page 89 when you think it through.
Okay. We are still on page 248. Anyone in the audience has any amendments on page 248? Okay, um, we are now on page 249. Councilwoman Clark?
Yeah, I.
You have, yeah, page 249.
Yeah.
Line 5 to 36, I'm just trying to help you.
Right, I, I'm not sure at all about this because I don't know what's involved in ham, ham radio operations anymore. It's probably done with a machine as big as your hand, maybe. But anyway, radio equipment. Um, it's page 249, uh, and in line 13, I would rewrite this sentence to say that towers that solely support ham radio equipment are conditional uses, subject to zoning board approval. Yeah, in the, now, I, the only reason I say this is because I have no idea whether these are big things or little things. And if they're little, nobody cares. But I just thought I'd put it in. What, does it, what's a ham radio infrastructure look like? I have no idea. Nothing? Or is it big towers? I don't know. Well, it's a ham radio, it's like World War II or something, Korean War.
We got a response to that.
Kind of a thing. But I, I don't.
Look into it.
Okay, we'll have to.
Okay, I, I mean, so can I just?
Yeah, because I mean, you got, I mean, you have, um, you don't know what it is, but you got amendment into it, so I.
Well, I put an amendment in as a way of saying, if, if this is like a broadcast studio in the old days, they should have to go someplace to get permission.
Oh, you're gonna, I'm gonna, this is gonna make you happy. I found some pictures.
Well, it'd make me happy if it's small and I can just read.
We gotta.
I'm fine.
Yeah, I'm just saying this, I'm just saying this to the committee. Councilwoman Clark has two and a half pages amendments, which is good. So in order for us to.
I'll leave the amendment.
Yeah.
Let me take it.
We are joined by Councilman Warren Branch and also Councilman Pete Wells. Is that a ham radio?
I, I suspect that ham radios now are used largely, really.
Well, looking at that, I think we need to talk about that.
I think we do.
Yeah, we gotta get, yeah, we're gonna have to get, who do we talk to? Seriously, we'll be informational in here. I mean, that tower looks like it's a, uh, a cell tower.
There's two things. I, I will talk to our in-house person who's more knowledgeable. And I have my note from the last time to discuss with, um, on antennas in general, based on our, our last hearing. And I, and to, with Councilwoman Clark, so I will get back to you on that.
It looks like a cell tower with stealth antennas. So you restart that up again.
And maybe it doesn't need to be called out separately. Maybe it can just blend in with the other antennas. But we'll, we'll get a recommendation on that.
That's a good point. She made a, she made a good point.
You know, we, this was written almost three years ago at this point. And, you know, technology changes.
Wow. Okay, so that is, that's, um, page 249, 5 to 36. On ham radio. Anyone else have anything on page 249?
Um, heard the term "ham radio operator."
Councilwoman Clark, you have.
Did you see the soup?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Still on page 249?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Henry?
Um, the section on automobile charging station, electric and solar, it only refers here to parking spaces within parking lots or parking garages. There was a gentleman here the previous week who referred to concerns he's had difficulties in getting charging stations in his neighborhood on the street.
The zoning code doesn't govern the right-of-way.
Okay.
The city does through its agencies, so that's why we wrote it this way. It doesn't need to be here.
Okay.
You could delete that, it still wouldn't solve his problem. I mean, you know, if you wanted to say parking spaces, that's fine. It doesn't really change the intent of this because it doesn't have the authority.
Expect the right-of-way.
Yeah, exactly. But if something were to change, you could delete that, just in case. If you know, if you wanted to say the within, leave out that phrase, um, it wouldn't hurt.
At law department?
Yeah, um, there's nothing in the current law that makes the zoning code not apply to the right-of-way. So we've certainly had litigation over whether it applies or not. But that's one thing to think about in this code. If you don't intend it to govern your rights-of-way at all, you should state that. If you don't want zoning to occur in the rights-of-way. Otherwise, most of the time, it will occur up to the median line of the, the property line will, will be considered to extend through to the middle of the street. So you, you probably want to be, just pick one and be consistent in your code. Do you want it to apply to the streets or not? And most of the time, the only things that it really affects are things like this or signs. That's usually where it comes up.
Yeah, I appreciate the clarification. And this has come up, um, already in other situations in, in the city. So it probably would be worthwhile clarifying. We did realize that we were operating on the assumption that it doesn't work in the right-of-way. And the zoning administrator does not get permits for prop, for right-of-way. So that's maybe an administrative problem that would have to be corrected.
Right, and obviously, the permit, we, we would essentially own the right-of-way. So then the permitting issue would be separate for rights-of-way than anywhere else. You know, like you'd get whatever you need to get minor privilege or whatever to put your stuff on the sidewalk. So it'd be similar for, you know, vehicle charging or whatever. But that's true for the code. You could decide it doesn't apply to any city property if you wanted it to. I mean, obviously, this code will not apply to the state or the federal government. But you could decide it doesn't apply to city-owned property at all, ever. But most, but, but the current code has been applied to city property. So you probably want to be clear in your wholesale new change.
Let's see if we're DOT.
Yeah, DOT would request an amendment, and I can draft it and work with this committee, but we would like for the zoning code not to apply to the right-of-way. And part of that is because of the duplicative permitting issuances, because of the, I mean, DOT, DGS currently, and soon DOT does the right-of-way permitting. It, there's a little bit, it gets a little convoluted if the zoning code does apply to that because we get a little confused over who to go to, when. There's also traffic signage implications here. So DOT would request that this not be applied to the right-of-way.
I, I need clarity because Councilwoman Henry brought up something. It was the Councilwoman Clark's district that we had a hearing. So just bear with me, so I understand this, make it as simple as possible for me. So in the future, with, with all these cars, electric cars, about, you know, so it may be just one person in that block may have, have it. But then if it catches on in the future where you may have six or seven houses that's going to have that station, so where would that, that would be on that person's property? And then, or, or would it be out in the right-of-way? And then would it be taking away parking spaces? I mean, this is what I'm asking, I mean.
Sure.
Am I clear what I'm trying to say to you?
Yeah, so if somebody wanted to erect an electric charging station in the public right-of-way, they would need to get either a franchise or a minor privilege. They would get, need some kind of legal approval to put that in the public right-of-way.
Does DOT have a uniform policy for that now?
No, DOT does not now.
So how they, how they operate? I mean, this, he did one, so what if, we did, people just come out and start?
It's currently under DGS. I hate to do that, but.
I don't understand, I mean.
Franchising and minor privileges are currently under DGS, not DOT.
So it would be, it would be general services?
It's currently general services.
You can use the microphone, so, so now it's, it's general services.
Your microphone is on.
Phil Henry?
Go ahead. Yes, currently it's under DGS, but it'll be, right-of-ways will be transitioning to DOT this July 1st. So by the time this law is in effect, it will be under DOT. But yeah, currently, right, if somebody wanted to put it in the right-of-way, they would have to go through the permitting process. And would get, need a minor privilege fee, minor privilege and do the fee and all of that, most likely, yes.
Private property.
Um, but yes, if we're on private property, that's private property.
Do you have a question?
No, I have a comment. Let me just tell you that my one constituent who does have a charging station and who gets $32 tickets almost every night because it forces him to park the wrong way on his side of the street. I think he spent a year trying to figure out what the permit process is. So as this transfers from Public Works to DOT, just in case there's two people in Baltimore that want a permit like this, we need a process.
Yeah, well, what I recommend is that we have a hearing, a formation hearing. We bring the agencies into the council, into the committee and go through that. Councilman Henry, then we want to move on.
Yeah, I, I just.
Part of the thought.
In that hearing.
As we move forward with considering the question of whether or not zoning should or shouldn't apply to the right-of-way, I just want to be, um, I just want to call our attention to the fact that we do have neighborhoods where there is nothing but right-of-way in front of the house. If you're, if you're in a row house neighborhood.
Yeah.
Where you're, you know, six, six feet, you're, the front of your house is six feet from the curb. You know, there, there is very little in the way of your own property to mount something like this on. You're going to have no choice if charging stations become more common. You're going to have no choice but to put them on sidewalks in the right-of-way. And if that's going to be the case, then I, I would just urge us to really think through the idea of whether or not zoning should apply to the right-of-way.
We're gonna have to have a hearing on that.
Yeah.
Because it is a good point.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything on page 249?
I do. I, I forgot something. The second part of my amendment five was to delete in its entirety, page 249, lines 19 through 22. It's just taking away the permitted status for what we call stealth design antenna.
I thought we, did we discuss this?
We talked about them last week, I think.
These are specific to the unique nature of ham radios, which I'm looking into, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we were rehearsing last week. She's supposed to get back to us on that.
Okay, I just want to delete that.
Is stealth design a term of art?
Yeah. It's actually a, a, it's not so far as a brand, but there is a company that is stealth design. And they are doing some amazing things, so.
Has the, has the Air Force talked about trademark infringement? Okay.
May I say one thing about stealth?
Is it, is it pertaining to?
It's hardly relevant, but basically, since I, since some, some industry people had to sit with me for an hour, let me do them the favor of saying, stealth really means camouflaged. You can't see it. But as has been said, it's like Scotch tape. A brand has become the generic name for, or Xerox, or Kleenex. A brand name has become the generic name for something. Jell-O.
We are now, we are now on, um, thank you, yeah. We are now on page 250, exterior lighting. Councilwoman Clark, uh, under 15 dash 505, pages 11 through 39, is that right?
Oh, is it page 250?
Yes, page 250, 11 through 39. What do you want, delete the whole page?
Basically, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the following in those lines 11, on page 250, um, on lines one and two. Uh, pay, excuse me. It's at the bottom of page 250 and the top of 251. What I am proposing is an amendment that, that changes the sentence on line 39 so that it reads, light poles for outdoor, for the exterior, exterior lighting for the exterior recreation areas is subject to design review, and I'm adding, and conditional use approval by the zoning board. I then delete, or recommend that, the sentence that says, "Light poles for recreational facilities that exceed 60 feet in height are conditional uses." So basically, I'm putting all exterior lighting for recreational areas as requiring zoning board approval. So I took the second sentence out because it becomes redundant. That's it.
Planning?
I, I know that Recreation and Parks is not attending these on a regular basis, but I would assume they would have some concerns about that. But.
I'm just thinking about situations in which these lights are near residential areas. And people go nuts about some of these lights shining in their windows.
The remainder of that section prior to this, the overall standards are pretty clear on the shielding and other requirements. But, so I think we would have to object to that, but.
I, I mean, I'd be glad to add some language that says, if they're within, you know, lighting distance of residential areas. But basically, I, I know that, like Hopkins University, on University Parkway, had, you know, has a lacrosse field. And the lights went, went up and people didn't have to turn their own lights on anymore for a couple blocks across the street. And although that saved them on their BGE, they didn't like it so much. So they went crazy. And so if we'd had to have some kind of a hearing of some sort, for example, we could have, you know, worked things out better. But it took a long time to get it fixed and get them out of the light. Now, that's something that's near residential facilities. I can think of other places where it would be a problem because of, of recreation. And so it's a recreational field, it's private, but it was a, it was a mess.
Again, we attempted in this code, as with all types of codes, to write logical rules. And I think that the standards there, for example, no X- and I think that, um, the standards there, for example, no exterior lighting, this is, may glare into or upon the surrounding area or any residential premises, you know, et cetera, et cetera, is, is based on that, and there's a lot of descriptive material. I think it's going to, um, make it very difficult, um, for these things to be heard, you know, you know, every little thing to be heard by the zoning board as a conditional use. Well, that's the distinction between 60 feet and higher than 60 feet.
I mean, there's, there's, I mean, I know in my community in Mall Park, I understand what you're saying, Councilwoman, it's, it's your amendment, and then, you know, the amendment's in, and we'll discuss it when we go to vote the amendments, but I know in Mall Park, um, and a couple of other communities, that they want more lighting, they want it on 24/7 because the kids are out there drinking at night, they're riding their dirt bikes, so, you know, um, the, the amendments, the amendment's in there, and we'll discuss it, you know, when we go to vote for the amendments.
Okay.
You also have, uh, Councilwoman Clark on page, has that it for 250? Yeah, that's page 250.
Right, I also have, well, I already told you that one.
251. Well, before you, before we go on to page 251, um, anyone else in the audience has anything, any amendments on page 250? No? Okay, so let's go with you on page 251. Um, it is amendment 14, page, line 14 through 39, right? You want, uh, home occupation?
Right.
Am I right?
I, I want, I want, um, a zoning board approval in all residential districts for, um, home occupations. That's what it is.
So you want BMGA approval for all that, right?
I do, just so people know what's going on.
Okay.
That's amendment seven.
Okay. Praying God, praying God responds to that.
Next thing you know. And if I could go on to my amendment eight, which is under home occupation, oh, I'm sorry. Um, on, um, page 251, line 24, I would delete truck. This isn't the biggest thing in the world to me, but it seems to be with a lot of constituents. Home occupation or not, vans are one thing, trucks are not permitted unless they're coming there to fix something. So that word should be deleted from, the word truck in line 24 should be deleted. Leave van, but don't, don't, don't indicate that trucks are okay because it's a home occupation, because that's what it does, it's against the law in a residential area, which is what we're talking about. So I would leave van, but I would take out the words truck or. So it would say, you can't cause, you know, the use may not create additional pedestrian, et cetera, et cetera, in excess of the normal amount typical for the area. Client or customer visits to the site are limited to more than, no more than three a day and 10 a week, no more than one van, not no more than one truck or van. That's the change. Whose capacity is limited to one ton may be used, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, you, yeah, where you have truck deleted, so are you, are you, praying you want to respond to that?
Um, yeah, I'm not sure that we have a strong opinion on the truck. I think the, our concern would be, again, this conditional use to the zoning board for home occupations. I think that is a huge problem in the 21st century. We rewrote the home occupation section from our current code, we looked at what Baltimore County did, and really carefully rewrote this to recognize that many people nowadays work in their home. That is a given, um, and, you know, to expect those, the, the whole point of having these standards here is if you meet these standards, you don't need to go to the board. Um, so I, in my view, that the discussion should be about the standards and whether they're adequate to protect neighbors' concerns, not to go to the board for a hearing just to do your work at home. Um, I think that's sending the wrong message to our citizens, to our residents who, who are trying, you know, in many times, you know, very, on, on very limited budgets, on a shoestring, to do a, a small home occupation. I mean, they have to pay fees just to go to the zoning board to do a, you know, nowadays you can do stuff on the internet, all sorts of businesses, and I think we would be sending the wrong signal to say every one of those needs to go to the zoning board.
Mr. Chairman, let, let me just say this. There's got to be some governing force around it before you've got trucks, vans, and everybody's saying, I'm a home occupation. And now, I don't, I, there's all kinds of people that work from home. They sit on their internet, they've got their phone, they're doing things all day long. Lots and lots. Now we're talking about how many vans and trucks you can have, what size sign you can put on your house, and other things like that. That's not, that's different.
Well, if that's the concern, my suggestion would be to rewrite point D there, line 22 to 26, and if it's just about trucks, make it more restrictive about trucks, uh, but to ask everybody to go to the zoning board because there's a concern about trucks is really throwing the baby out with the bathwater.
Sign. I'm concerned about all the prohibitions that indicate the kinds of things this code is worried about, which far exceed what I think of as a home occupation.
I mean, the sign is limited to a name plate, the name plates are defined, um, I mean.
Right, you're turning, here, here's, it's another example of turning residential into commercial by right. And I'm sorry, it's a problem, and it's a philosophical problem that I have with that na, with that notion, because I'm not sold on mixed use with, in a given block of commercial in the middle of residential. I know the kinds of angst it can create. So the reason I say zoning board, conditional use, that's not like hard to do or to get permission from, in my experience, but it gives the constituent a place to go where they take it seriously, what they're doing. They might have conditions for conditional use put on them, and the citizens have someplace to be heard and to hear about what's being planned instead of perceiving it signed by van, by truck.
Well, we're, okay, um.
It's a speech, I'm sorry. It's just because a lot of the places where I, we disagree is philosophical.
Well, it's not just philosophical, I mean, the, the amendment's in, what you're saying, I mean, and I have the same situation in my district, you know, I mean, it's not just Councilwoman Clark's district, that you may have two or three people that bring the trucks at home, you know what I mean? And it takes enough residential, you know, passenger cars, um, and once you say to a company, hey, I can take my truck home, they're going to say, okay, take it home. So the, the thing is, is that it's something we have to look at, I mean, if you, if you take out, uh, uh, truck or just leave van, is that?
Well, I mean, that's my amendment, that's what, but my, but my amendments, the first part of my amendment is the zoning board thing, which I think is what.
Yeah, you wanted to go for the BMGA?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Or else create a.
Huh?
I don't care how many people, I don't care how many people sit on their computers all day and on their phones, and they can even have 20 computers and work.
Yeah, let's, let's hear from the parking authority.
A call that often comes through our office are people that own a, a truck that falls into the Article 31 definition of a commercial vehicle, and they will receive a parking citation. And it, and is, that commercial vehicle is defined within Article 31, so I don't know if that's something you would want to look at in terms of being applied here, because one thing is that we say is, well, it's because you're on the public street, and you can't be on it between such and such hours, and a lot of people feel comfortable if they can just take that vehicle and put it on private property. Um, so that's a definition worth looking into to apply here in this case, to see.
I think, I think the Law Department, I mean, and after you, that's it, because, um, it's going to be in the committee, and it's up to the committee members to decide whether we support Councilwoman Clark's amendment or not. Go ahead.
Sure, I mean, I think originally the Law Department perhaps didn't appropriately focus on this. I guess we thought that this was, you know, under the umbrella of accessory uses, and which is where it is. But now, looking at it, I'm seeing that there's, there's no introductory language that says you can work in your home unless comma, like unless, yep, you know, you generate noise or whatever. I mean, we'd, we'd have a constitutional problem if we told people they, they can't sell their old clothes on eBay. I mean, like, we would have a problem if they couldn't, you know, for example, just sell things on eBay and use regular, and I'm getting that that's not what's intended here, so maybe, maybe some language that's introductory that says something like, you know, home occupations are not accessory uses unless, or they don't even fall under this section unless they do something like generate noise, or have a big truck, or a sign, or something, whatever aesthetically you care about, because it actually is silent on what this is, it just sort of says, it makes it seem like all home occupations are accessory uses. And, right.
I mean, by right.
Right, so it's saying that, but it's not saying are they permitted or are they prohibited, it's just classifying every single person who gets online and sells something on eBay now has an accessory use in their home.
It's, yeah.
But it's not permitting it, and it's not denying it, so I think we need some clarifying language to say, are they all allowed except for this, or are they all prohibited except for this? I mean, some introductory phrasing in 15 507 that just kind of, sort of comes out with your general policy.
You just don't want.
Per with that, the, the understanding, and based on the definition, was they're all permitted if you meet these standards, it's not treated as an accessory use. I'm just relooking at the definition, um, I think the definition is very clear, it's carried on in a dwelling unit, um, and secondary to the use of the dwelling unit.
So you're, Laurie, am I right, you're saying that these as accessory uses, somewhere it says all of the, like, is it 15 501, they're all permitted unless?
Yeah, I think it actually belongs in, in the use tables or in Title VIII, the residential, but, um, yes, the, the assumption is that, I'm just not sure, 15 is the standards for it as opposed to the permissions for it.
So they're basically all permitted as long as they meet these criteria? You can't have trucks, you can't have a sign, you can't have loud noise? Okay.
That is the intention, and I'm looking up where that is stated.
Okay. Joe, you, you want to add to that?
I do, thank you. Um, these are on the table as a separate use, as a permitted use in all residential, that's where it is right now. And I just wanted to add that whether they remain permitted or switch to conditional, I just felt when I looked at this section, this is a use standard section, I think this section belongs in cha, in Title 14, it doesn't have anything to do with measurements, it really, this is really a use standard section, and it just seems terribly out of place in this, in this title. That was my comment.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, should the committee or?
Yes, and it is in the tables, thank you.
Thank you.
But I have an amendment in the tables.
Okay, um, Councilwoman, okay, we are now on, um, amendment nine out of your 19 amendments, so we have 10 more amendments to go through.
16.
So it's, uh, page 252, page 252, um.
Right, mechanical equipment.
Mechanical equipment, two through 19.
On, on line seven to 10, what I'm doing here is saying the, I'm adding this, it says that if ground-based mechanical equipment is located in a non-residential district adjoining a residential district, the equipment has to be completely screened. What I'm saying is, if, I'm adding that if ground-based mechanical equipment is located in a residential, office residential, or industrial mixed-use district, which one of my neighborhoods is loaded with, two of them, a non, um, or is in a non-residential district adjoining one of these districts, one of these, like either residential, office, residential, or IMU.
Right, I got it.
It has to be screened. In other words, you've got mechanical equipment on the ground, and it's near a residential, office, residential, or IMU, it has to be screened.
Again, it, it's up to the council, but just to explain the rationale, um, the concern, generally in non-residential districts, the equipment is very large, so the concept here was to screen the large stuff from the smaller, from the homes. Um, with this amendment, that would become a house-to-house thing. So what you would be requiring by the fact of this amendment is every single little air conditioning use, you know, unit that sits in your backyard, you know, anybody that has central air has that little box in their backyard, and you would be requiring homeowners to screen that. Um, I think that may, you know, some people may find that a little bit too stringent, because those boxes, you know.
Yeah, I get it.
I mean, they're not beautiful, but I don't think every homeowner wants to go out and build a fence around it, and that's what this.
Right, I agree.
That's what your amendment would require.
So I'll withdraw that amendment, I just didn't think it through that way.
All right. So you're withdrawing amendment nine?
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's, let's, um, now we are on amendment 10, and that's on page 252, um, 15 dash 509, um, 20 through 41, the entirety, you want to?
I want to get rid of the whole thing, it's, I find it un, unenforceable, vague and unenforceable, and, and it, um, redundant, because there are already different kinds of rules pertaining, and you can't enforce it. I mean, basically, I wrote under my, I wrote why, um, if they're unenforceable, what's a required yard? How do we enforce it? Like, how do I know? How does a, somebody who's enforcing know whether something's for sale or not?
Planning?
What's, how do you enforce temporary? Who knows? I mean, it's really, it's a, it's, it's trying to regulate something that, that already has basic rules going for it, minor privilege and things like that, zoning, but it's trying to really tie up the loose ends of it, and it's almost impossible to do, that's all. I, I think it's a nice idea, but I don't know how you enforce it and know the difference about what things.
Again, this was written with the probably misunderstanding based on law that, um, we did not govern the right of way, so this was written for where there's outdoor sales in someone's yard as opposed to the right of way, and the councilwoman's correct that we know we do have minor privilege and that sort of things. I guess I would have to, um, you know, I'm not sure if we took the position that we couldn't enforce. know, I'm not sure if we took the position that we couldn't enforce it, you know, that we wouldn't be writing any laws. The idea here is that if you have, you know, do outdoor sales and display, there's some basic standards, and, you know, if it gets ridiculously junked up, you know, someone can call zoning enforcement, and they come out and give you a violation if you're not meeting these. I mean...
So is this out, just can be, outdoor, outdoor sales and display, so is this a, is a flea market?
It could be a flea market. It could be any of those things. I, I do think we need some basic standards, you know, about the display and the, the stuff that is often put in yards and sold. This isn't necessarily about temporary. Often, these things aren't temporary. So, you know, again, I would defer to the council. I don't think you want to give up just because you think something can't be enforced.
Mr. Chair?
But I guess to, to piggyback on law's concern, I mean, the discussion about the right-of-way probably also needs to be clarified, and, you know, with transportation, because...
If it's a public right-of-way, yeah.
That's, falls under transportation's rules now.
Okay.
This would apply for lots, not right-of-way.
Okay, all right. Uh, you still make the folks that we all can hear?
I, I just want to say this. We, you know, we just went through the title where we did flea markets. I, I know we didn't do all the fine points of them, but when they can be and how long and yard sales and stuff like that. Look, I don't care if you want to keep this. I'm just saying, it's not enforceable because it's a, it's like this. It's like saying, no more than four unrelated people can live in a house, right? And then the inspector goes out and, and then he comes back to you and says, "Well, I couldn't get in the house to count the mattresses." Well, of course you couldn't. And so in this, it's like, how do you know what's for sale, what's temporary, what's permanent, what's junk? And so I don't care if it stays here, because it's not one of these things. It doesn't matter. It's just, doesn't, you can't enforce it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. We, anyone else have amendments on page 252?
Oh, God.
No? Okay, so we are now on page 253, Councilwoman Clark, amendment number eleven, two pages, yeah, page 253, one through twenty-nine, outdoor storage. Right?
Yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm going to go through these very fast because, because I am. Amendment eleven, about under outdoor storage, it says, "Uses allowed accessory outdoor storage," and I'm adding, "in districts designated in this section 15-510." So in other words, only in those districts, only does this apply to the districts designated. I then go through and take some districts out. So in line, Amendment thirteen, I'm taking... Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm sorry, thank you. "The following uses are allowed as accessory outdoor storage only on the privately owned lot on which the principal use is located." Is that okay? I mean, is that the intention? It's accessory. And then thirteen, I'm deleting the applicability to industrial one zoning. In Amendment fourteen, I'm deleting the applicability to IMU. That's it. Fifteen, wait a minute, I'm sorry. And then, outdoor storage, where underlying ten, where we talk about outdoor storage in a motor vehicle service and repair, it should be, I added language that says, "Limited to the storage capacity of the privately owned principal lot for which storage is an accessory use, and not including public roadways, alleys, or lot. Such storage is," and I take out, "prohibited when establishment is required to be fully enclosed."
Planning, go with that? What's your opinion?
I don't have a problem with the ad. I don't particularly want to delete the prohibited when establishment is required to be fully enclosed.
Fine with me.
That's pretty important, because you...
Okay.
That's okay.
When it's required to be inside, it should be required to be inside.
So it's win-win situation.
Okay, yeah. I agree.
What number is that?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Delete, the deletion.
Delete the deletion, leave everything else. The additions can stay, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, all right.
Yeah.
Good. So win-win, everybody, okay. So that was amendment, we got up to amendment fifteen. Now, anyone else have any questions on page 253? Amendments? No?
No.
Just for the record, our sort of expert on antennas did stop by, and there are variations in the ham radio issue. They can vary in size, so generally, they're very small, little nothings. But they are also regulated by the Federal Communications Commission, similarly to antennas. So I think my suggestion there is to roll those concerns into the similar discussion with antennas.
Okay, throw them in with antennas.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Okay. My last amendment on that, on, oh, I'm sorry.
So...
I jumped ahead.
Now we're, now we're on, let me see, we did two fifty, anyone, or 254, 254? Anyone on page 255?
It's not last.
255, 255, Ms. Joan Floyd, is it amendment, or you got a...
Um, I'm gonna, I'd like to bring something to the attention of the committee on this...
Yeah, go ahead.
On the section of porches that actually begins on 254 but goes over to 255.
Okay, what I need you to do, when you say 254, let me know what, give me the line on 254.
Okay. The section on porches begins on line thirty-three on 254, and it goes to page eight, to line eighteen on 255.
Okay, so you're dealing basically with, with porches.
Exactly.
Fifteen dash five twelve, right?
That's right.
Okay, great.
And in particular, if we go to 255, lines five and six, I think what I'd like to bring to the committee's attention is we're going to get into some issues, I think, with, with front yards and the relationship with porches. And if the intention is going to be to, to maintain currently unenclosed porches, then a couple of things I want to bring to your attention. Well, first of all, on line five on page 255, "Front porches must remain open." That word, "open," do we mean unenclosed? Is that what we mean? We just defined terms on the previous page. So we should, we should use the correct term, okay. And then it says, "Original porches must be retained and may not be filled in with opaque materials." What we're going to get into is situations in which a front porch is going to not, not, once the mapping's done, I think we're going to have situations in which a front porch will not encroach on the required yard, but it will come right up to the required yard line. How are you going to prevent someone from replacing that porch with anything they want to replace it with? How are you going to prevent them from replacing it with a front addition, a two-story addition? I mean, how, if they, if they comply with the front yard requirements, how are you going to prevent them from enclosing the porch or even replacing it with an addition?
Okay, planning?
This code is, basically, you're not, and that's not the intention of doing that. If there is, you know, a preservation intention, that would be, you know, have to be handled under like a local district, that sort of thing. I mean, people today can build, if, if their front porch is not in their required yard, they can build an addition up to their required yard. That's allowed today, or in the back, or wherever. You know, if somebody wants to do an addition that's within the buildable area of the lot, this is more intended to focus on the ability to put it into the required yard and the design standards as such. And, you know, what the screened in and that sort of...
Is this a design standard issue?
No, this is, this is really a site standard, but it is not intended to say you can't put a front addition on your house.
Is that what we're talking about?
But doesn't it say you can't screen in your porch?
No.
You got to use the mic, Councilwoman, because this is being, it's being televised, so you want the audience to hear what you have to say.
But no, no, what, what I'm concerned about is it's saying that you can't screen in...
No, it doesn't say that.
...a porch. No, but it just, that's what I, that's what it reads. You can't screen in an existing porch.
I guess I'm confused.
Well, it says you can't, you can't enclose your front...
Oh, I see. The enclosed includes the screened in. If it's, if it's in that, in the yard, no, you can't enclose it.
If, but if it's a front porch?
Mm-hmm.
But then it says that you, that you can't do it with opaque materials, so what does it mean? It doesn't, it doesn't allow a person to screen in...
Councilwoman, need a microphone.
We can review it and get back to you. I think the, Ms. Floyd is correct. We need to agree on the intention, what you would want it to be. It was certainly written with the idea that if you have room in front of your house, this is not intended to prohibit you from doing an addition if you have the room in your yard. It is about maintaining the character of the porches, which are often within the front yard.
So that, you, you, I think you all get my point. There's tension here between different intentions and different situations we're going to come up with. When we, when you look at mapping and you look at the required yard, there are certain residential districts that have no required front yard. And so anyway, this is an issue I think is really going to become important to get resolved in some, some way.
I guess I am also concerned about if the language says that...
Thank you, Ms. Floyd.
If the language says that, what if you have a detached house with a porch? You can't enclose it?
No, the intention is not for that if it's not in the required yard. So I guess what I would suggest is to ask, first of all, do, does the committee agree that if a porch sits in the yard, it shouldn't be able to be enclosed as a structure versus it should? And then we can kind of back up from there. I mean...
What, what would be the purpose or the reason to prohibit it? Of enclosing an existing porch?
The only way I can best explain it is going to use, be to use my block, and I know the councilwoman is going to know the story I'm talking about. But I live in a rowhouse block that has front porches, but those porches are all open because they're in the yard. They're in the legally required twenty-foot yard versus, you know, somebody that's set back, the porch is not in the yard.
Detached house.
Right. They're treated differently when they're in the required yard. And that is the intention. I agree that maybe it's not as clear as it should be, but...
There should be a distinction.
We had a case where someone wanted to enclose their front porch on our block, and the neighbors fought vehemently against that because it was in the required yard, and it became a de facto addition on the front of the house.
But this is a bit overreaching.
So can you...
So we, we'll...
There should be a distinction, Laurie.
We'll make that clear. And I think if everybody concurs that we don't want to allow enclosures in required front yards, we can make that clear.
Yeah, but that, that, this, this goes beyond that. This language goes beyond that.
Okay, so you're going to get back, you're going to look at this and get back?
I, I don't disagree. I mean, I don't...
The reason I say that, because it's televised and so the listening audience...
I'm sorry, no, I apologize. I think what my council colleague said is the appropriate comment right now. This doesn't have enough words going on. It's a complicated issue. And I'm only now understanding the distinction you're making between porches, open porches acting as not the, really, the entrance to the house. So the setback can discount open porches. Right. But in general, I'd like to say that me, I'm not opposed to enclosing porches, but I wasn't thinking of your distinction, and I think it's worth a discussion, because small as it sounds, it's big, big issue. Right. It's one of those issues that will come back to haunt us if we don't address it properly and with enough words and distinctions.
I agree.
I will, I will take a stab.
Okay, I just want to, Ms. Floyd, you want to...
I just wanted to give you an example of the problem, if it's, if I may. We have, I can, I can think of one block in our neighborhood, which the, the proposed map has proposed to go from an R7 to an R8. We don't really know why, but they're, they're saying, "Oh, it's the same." Well, it's not the same, because if you take that block and you take it from R7, which has a required front yard, and then you make it R8, suddenly, everyone by right on that block, well, one neighbor, they're, they're porches, they're unenclosed porches. But one neighbor is going to, by right, be able to build out, not even, not just to where the porch is, but beyond. It, it makes a difference when you're talking about the yard, the required yard, or, you know, what's happening with the porch. If your, if your intention is to preserve, I mean, that's a discussion that has to happen, because if the intention is to preserve...
The character of the block.
Then you don't want to have a situation where by right, they could do something completely different, so.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Floyd. Two, page 256?
Uh, council, councilmember. If I could, I have a comment on 255, but a different section.
Okay, where are you at?
I'm just on 15-513 Public Park. I just wanted to comment again for the record. This, this kind of language is what makes it confusing when people read and try to determine if the city council intended this zoning code to apply to city-owned property. So again, I think you just have to decide which way you want to go.
City-owned property distinct from right-of-way.
Well, right. I mean, there's, there's a couple of different theories. Does this code apply to all city-owned property? Will it apply to all city-owned property but not the right-of-way? Or will it not apply to any city-owned property? And so I think, I'm just raising that, you know, this was drafted, I think, as Laurie indicated, under the theory that it will apply to all lots and never to a right-of-way. But I think you, you need to be clear, because the law allows you to pick. So if you sort of piecemeal, sort of say here, "Here's what can happen in a public park," you know, and, and also, if you're saying what happens in a public park here in your zoning code, you've got to be careful in other areas. If a day comes and everyone hates information kiosks, then you're going to have to come back to the zoning code and take that out as a non-allowable use in our own, in the city-owned park. So I'm just sort of putting that on the record. You, you want to pick which way you want to go.
Yeah, we don't disagree, and the, for, for the council's benefits through our public hearings and discussions with citizens on the zoning code in general, we heard loud and clear resentment from people that the state and federal government are exempt from local zoning. And they were very clear, never make the city exempt from its own zoning code.
Okay. Anyone else on that, on page 255? Do you want to use the microphone?
When we, on that alone, when we are plagued with...
When we, on that alone, when we are plagued with state uses, and the state doesn't have to apply by local zoning, this is where I, I come into problems. And that won't change. I mean, these group homes or these other services that are coming in, that are state, state-licensed, or state-provided, they don't have to abide by local zoning.
Oh, state-licensed doesn't exempt you from the local zoning code, it's only state-owned.
State-owned.
Mr. Willis?
Yeah.
Most of the group homes are not state-owned.
No, but this, but this, but if it's for a state purpose, if it's for, if the use is for a state purpose...
That's not exempt.
Then it has to be state-owned.
State-owned.
And it doesn't apply to local zoning.
Right, if it is state-owned.
And from local zoning.
Right. The VA Hospital, the University of Maryland...
Schools.
You know, Coppin State University, they are exempt.
Okay.
Not a licensed institution that gets a license by the state.
I got it.
You got it?
But again, when we drafted this, we did assume, maybe incorrectly, that the right-of-way was not subject.
Thank you.
So I think that's fairly consistent.
Anyone else on page 255? We have, anyone else, or anyone have any amendments to discuss on page 256? Okay, now we are on Councilwoman Clark, we're on page 257, under 15, satellite dish antennas.
Uh, yeah, that's, uh, line, page 257...
Five through four.
Line 23. There's this typo, and, you need correction, and I don't know what that would be. Every effort must be made to install small or from the public right-of-way. Small something, I, I don't know what that is. 27, line 23 is a, is a sentence that doesn't make sense, and the problem should drive it. It's, I don't...
I think we caught that in the Planning Commission amendments, but I have to look that up again.
Okay, I'll, shall I just go on? It's just a typo, I'm not trying to get rid of it or anything, I'm just trying to... Right.
Keep it in there until they come back and show it?
There's a correction that's...
Yeah, okay. You caught it?
She's got a check.
Well, when we, when the time, okay, it's a language.
I mean, basically, I, I'm sure it's fine, I guess... It needs to be noted.
Planning?
It needs to be noted and corrected. Yeah. And, you know, I'm, I'm not looking to amend it.
Okay.
Okay. So, if I can go on, I've got three more, and they're all...
What page is that? That's, it's still on page, um, 257. They're all on page...
257, um...
259 and 260, yeah. 257, go ahead.
I'm sorry, you know what, I didn't put any reference line here, I apologize.
No, and two, let me, let me help you out. On, on, title, on 15-506, you have 506, I'm sorry, you do have page 257, you got line 33.
And that's correct, so, I would amend that just in two places, line 33 and 36, I would say that in residential districts, large dish antennas...
Mary, can I have a microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. All right, line 33, I would add, I'll indicate, in residential districts, large dish antennas, and I would add, require zoning board approval as a conditional use, and, and then back to the original language, is allowed only in the rear yard, and must be set back from all lot lines, a distance at least equal to the height of the dish, but in no case less than five feet, and I would change five feet to 10 feet. That's not the height of the dish, that's the setback requirement. I would go from five to 10, if, that would be in the amendment, so...
So every one of them is BMGA, you wanted to go in front of BMGA, right? For community...
I, I would, yes, I would want the zoning board approval for large satellite dish antennas. I did not ask for that for small ones. All right, so...
By the time the code is complete, I don't think anybody will use the large ones anymore. Again, this is probably outmoded technology, but we have, a, a, there, this is something that I believe is FAA-regulated, and may, you know, there may be issues, but we have no objections to that.
Yeah, the Law Department has outside counsel for the FCC laws that are impacted by cell phone towers and others, and I'll pass this on to that person, because, you know, if we were to try to do that, we'd probably fall asleep.
I, I do want to note, and I will correct the language that you pointed out, the typo, but that line 23 to 26, under the small satellite dishes, which is the direction that folks are going, we do hope that this is okay, we did add the sentence there that says, "Satellite dishes are not permitted on any facade that adjoins a street unless a report is submitted to verify that this facade is the only location that receives an adequate signal."
Who makes that report?
Pardon me?
Where's that report come from? Is that from...
We did write this at the request of some community groups, and we did review it with someone-in-law at the time, that as long as, you know, there's a lot of concerns about these small dishes right on the front of rowhouses.
Right.
And, we were told that you can't flat-out prohibit them, but you can require them to prove that that's the only place they can get a decent signal.
Okay.
So, just wanted to note that there.
Hillary, before you add into, Mr. Willis has been patiently...
I just, as, as you work through this, I just want to point out, if you have a very narrow lot, if you have a 20-foot lot, you'd have a very teeny line on which you could put an antenna, because if you come in 10 feet from both sides, you're right on a line. So, as you consider, you know, what to do with this, checking out the FCC rules, just an observation on, on what you want to consider for small lots, it's a problem with small lots.
We'll pass all of this on to our outside FCC counsel, because actually, whatever we said in the past has probably changed anyway. The FCC does a lot of their stuff by regulation, and they keep changing it, so that's part of the reason we, we got outside counsel for this stuff, because it, it changes every single time they have a regulation update.
Trying to keep some attorneys in paying jobs, I guess.
I'm trying not to fall asleep.
Ah. Well, I'm not gonna take the blame for that, because I only have two more amendments.
Okay, you're finished with page 258?
No, I have one more amendment there, and that is on...
Is that page 257, 258?
No, I'm done with 57.
Okay, so now you're on page 258?
Yep, yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead. Alternative energy system?
Amendment 18, basically, this is alternative energy systems, solar, and I would begin that section after line 15, before anything else that's there now, I would, I would add, in all residential districts, zoning board is, approval is required for solar, alternative energy systems as a conditional use.
Planning?
This is handled in the use tables, and again, these standards would apply everywhere. I think to make them conditional should go in the use table. We have, just for the background, broken down alternative energy systems into three tiers, the sort of residential, the kind of semi-commercial, and I can explain that in tables, and the more commercial uses, and have different permissions based on that. We believe these standards should apply everywhere, and if the council wants to make them conditional, and this, this would apply to amendment 19 as well, we can save time, it, that needs to be in the tables.
And I have done that in, I have already proposed amendments to the tables, and if that's where they, it belongs, and it's, and this is just redundant, that's fine.
Okay, I just, I just want to add that, I said two hours, but we didn't start till, like, 20 after, and we only have four more pages, so if the committee, if the, if the committee wishes, we'll just, we'll go along with those four tables and work with it, everybody fine with that?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So, that was page 258. Councilwoman, you have...
I have no more amendments.
You have, yeah, you got page 259.
I do? I'm sorry.
You did? Okay. All right, so let me go to...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, I just agree, I just agree that we'll handle all these requirements for wind, sun, and everything else in the tables, which I've already submitted, so...
Okay. Let me, so Councilwoman Clark and the council, the committee has done their amendments. Does anyone in the audience have any amendments on page 257? Any agencies? Anyone from the audience or agencies have any amendments on page 258? Anyone have any amendments? On page 259? Page 260? Page 261? Page 262? Okay, I want to thank everyone for attending the work session on Title 15. Our next work session is on City Council Bill, on City Council Bill 12-0152, Transform Baltimore Zoning. It's February the 11th at 2:00 PM. This will be Work Session 16. No?
Title.
Yeah, Title, Title. Title 16. Huh? 140 minutes? Yeah, wait a minute. So, so this concludes the work session, thank you.